I call this meeting of the Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order me. I have a roll call, please. Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Ms. Cavill? Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Here.
Mr. McGowan? Mr. Rosenblum?
Here.
Mrs. Pumpwitz?
Here.
Would everyone please rise and join me in the closing? The flags are directly behind there and at the side. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item is public comments and hearing. The board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, this board meeting is being taped and live stream. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of the meeting and be respectful of those at the podiums and they will be heard. When I call on your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individuals who use time or place at order may now be referred to another individual. If you wish your response through the superintendent's procedure made, inform over with Mr. Temper. And we've got three speakers. It's Jennifer Dahl first, I'll let Chris Steel, and then Stacy Gill. Jennifer Dahl?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Jennifer Dahl. I am a resident of this district. I have two children in District 211. I would like to address safety in our schools in regard to creating, to the creation of this year's strategic plan. In the strategic plan from 2016, there is a value statement regarding safety. It states, quote, "Our district values safeguarding the welfare of all by providing a positive and respectful environment," end quote. What has been happening in our schools, especially since the beginning of 2022, does not reflect this value statement. One hundred and sixty-seven students have been involved in a fight in fifty-seven days of instruction. I will repeat that. One hundred and sixty-seven students have been involved in a fight in fifty-seven days of instruction. A student brought a weapon into my children's school with clear intent to hurt another student. It is shocking, frankly, what is really going on in these school buildings. The teachers are frustrated. Many students are not feeling safe in their buildings. The lack of respect of students to other students and students to staff is a growing concern among students, staff, and frankly, the parents in this district. The videos of the fights are circulating, and the disrespect is boldly apparent. This cannot be swept under the rug. How can we incorporate safety into the strategic plan? How can we show as a district that we, quote, "value safeguarding the welfare of all by providing a positive and respectful environment," end quote? How can we be sure that it is known that when you walk into a 211 building, that respect is expected on all levels? Student to student, student to staff, staff to student, and staff to staff. Because of the known increase in violence in our schools, I respectfully ask Mr. Bradley, Mr. Dubrowski, Mr. McGowan, Mrs. Pumpwitz, Ms. Cavill, Mr. Kramer, Mr. Rosenblum, and Dr. Small to include this crucial component into creating our next strategic plan. While it is not part of 2016's plan, it is imperative for it to be included in 2022. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristen Steel, and then Paula B. Steel.
Good evening. Excuse me. In reading through the current strategic plan from 2016, and where the district is at and the categories presented in the strat plan, it is clear that many of the goals and action steps have either just scratched the surface or have gone by the wayside quickly. Now, as I'm sure you all know, that a well-written strat plan has vision, values, areas of focus, objectives, KPIs, and an end result. In combing through prior year's strat plan, what is missing is the how. How to achieve the objectives and goals and the measurements of success or the KPIs. Over the past two years, many gaps have been identified, and those gaps must be addressed in a plan for moving forward. Learning loss, attendance, violence in our schools, decreased SAT scores, and much more. Things like this cannot be glossed over and ignored. These are just some of the imperative school issues that will continue to make our district decline if not addressed with an action plan in place. One example of this would be implement SAT prep courses and independent study guides by year one. That was in 2016's strat plan. Surfacely, this has been done, but what is the action plan, goals, and metrics to measure of this success? And it is not at all reflected in the strat plan. As a matter of fact, there are no measures of success for these goals. If I were to measure the success of the goal of implementing SAT prep courses, I suppose we could all say that yes, each school has a prep program. But then we also need to discuss and rectify the disparity of the prep time a month to our five schools, as well as the declining SAT scores over the past five years. Another goal to mention is, quote, "create a tracking system by the end of year one to identify students who are meeting, exceeding, or below the expectations for grades in attendance." We have seen through the data compilation that has been done and know that the percentage of students meeting SAT performance levels has declined. Now, there are way more metrics to mention if given more time, but suffice it to say there must be a corrective action plan in this strat plan moving forward, which addresses academic gaps, learning losses, and this must appear in the strat plan moving forward with measurable goals. Interruency is now something that is measured by our district and is close to six percent for 2020. This should not be ignored and should be clearly addressed with a clear action plan for improvement. Lastly, and certainly not least, I want to address safety and violence. I am not talking with a kind of safety we have all had to endure over the past couple of years, like social distancing, sanitizer, and masks. I'm talking actual safety, like guns, knives, and fighting. As already mentioned by Jennifer, the number of fights within our schools has increased to a level that has not ever been seen. As adults in charge, we collectively can blame and pass this off on a whole host of reasons, but really, none of the reasons matter. It is happening, and it needs to be addressed in plans. Not in one year, four or five years, but now. The violence in our schools must be addressed and approved upon. That is why I'm asking that a goal of decreasing violence in our schools is a goal in the 211 strategic plan, and it is accompanied by an action plan that is clear with measurable outcomes. The D-211 five-year strategic plan should encompass the entire district at a macro level with actionable plans for improvement that aid in achieving the vision our district has, as well as consistently fulfilling our mission. Our five-year strategic plan should not be comprised as superficial goals of only diversity and equity, but also academic progress and success. So vision, action plan, clear measures of success, that is what the community expects. In closing, I implore you all to have the important and insightful discussion around academic success and improvement, as well as violence in our schools. Develop an executable plan with smart goals. And please be transparent and share this with the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Steel?
Hello, my name is Stacy Gill. I'm a resident of 211. I provided a copy of my public comments from March of 2016, and would appreciate a response since I received no response to my rolling trust meeting. In addition, I have following questions and like the following information. Who was involved in developing the continuity for students being excluded plan for the district? It was referenced in the Falkton Plan. I'd like names and titles of the healthists involved in the process, but the plan was exited and approved by the board. The plan is not need to only stay of all regards for remote learning, nor does it come anywhere near meeting the ISD guidelines which require the combination of C-prints and A-C-prints learning. The point in December provided valuable information how ineffective the optional academic support was for students. Of over thirteen thousand accesses, which would take me nearly a hundred thousand hours of attendance, only one hundred and seventy-seven point five of academic support was provided, and nearly half of that support was provided to Krenn, the highest achieving school in the district. At that point, were there any discussions by the administration, staff, or board to discuss how embarrassingly ineffective the plan was? Were there any steps to improve the plan and increase academic support? Since the March meeting, has any board member asked the administration why they implemented a plan that did not meet the minimum state standards by law? Did the union have anything put into the plan? If so, who was allowed to provide input? Do you, as an administrative team and a board, believe the academic support provided to students who were excluded from school was the best the district could offer, or was it a compromise with the union? As a parent and a taxpayer, I expect more from this district. I hope in the development of your district strategic plan, you address the significant learning loss of students, and you begin to put students' needs ahead of the union's. I hope each of you board members begin to listen to parents who are advocating for academic success for all students. I know a number of board members love to brag to the community about how they listen to students and are advocating for students. Have any of you talked to a student who was excluded this year for two weeks due to COVID? Have any of you talked to a student who had COVID symptoms and was excluded with no academic support for days or weeks? Take the time to ask the students as you walk down the halls. How many of them think they could miss two weeks of school and not miss a week? I look forward to a response from the administration and the board members regarding my concerns.
Thank you. And that takes us to our strategic plan workshop, and the Board of Education will review and discuss strategic plan recommendations from the steering committee regarding the district mission statements, value statements, and priorities, goals, and indicators. We're set up in the other portion of the media center here, so we're going to walk over that way, and then there'll be a presentation check. Please come over that way.
Okay, so.
No, we're in the rest area now.
Oh, okay. Well, it's just everything's starting seven.
No.
Stuff like that.
So a maximum of thirty minutes is probably fine.
Right, okay. I thought that was.
So we're ready. So, yeah.
Good evening. I'm looking for those competitive people. I know some of you, but others haven't had a hundred percent of work with this business. So thanks for having me this evening. We'll spend no more than ninety minutes tonight. Our focus is to just update you on where the progress of the strategic plan is, give you a little bit of feedback on what happens from focus groups specifically in this process. But then to really dig into the values and the mission, those are two pieces of policy that the board owns, and through policy procedure, if there are changes to those, then you need to make those through some policy procedures. So you might spend some time this evening, being able to unpack those and look at the feedback from the focus groups and the steering committee and those two components specifically. So we'll spend some time during the first part of the meeting, really digging into values and mission. We'll spend some time here in whole group. We'll spend some time in small groups, really working. This is going to be kind of a roll of our sleeves and do the work session as well, so work session is appropriate. We'll review some feedback from the focus groups and the steering committee. I'll share through the timeline how the steering committee has their need as well, a little bit of detail on the number of focus groups that we conducted, et cetera. We'll use that feedback to look at and think about the duration of the strategic plan. So one other decision that will happen to be made last night, but something to get you started in terms of thinking about is the length of this plan. Is it a three-year plan? Is it a four-year plan? Is it a five-year plan? And one of the things that we hope can help you make that decision is the scope of what you're taking on as an organization and as a district. So we'll look at the goals, the indicators, the priorities that are in draft food that have been developed by the steering committee, and that'll help us start to answer that third component, those review. So those are the three components. A couple of, before we get into the actual work, a couple of informational pieces, timeline. So we've been working since November on the plan. Each of these circles, what says SC represents the steering committee meeting. So monthly, a steering committee meets, as you all know, there's a cross-section of stakeholders. It's approximately thirty people that represent the parents, teachers, principals, community members, central office staff, board. A few board members sit on that steering committee. So that steering committee really does get work to do. They even steer the strategic plan. We also have several inputs from the community beyond the steering committee. One of those is a survey that happened in December that asked what the priorities of the district should be based on the lived experience of those in the districts. We did some survey analysis in January, which helped inform the work that you have in front of you this evening, the priorities, et cetera. We then met a couple of times and continued to evolve the plan or draft plan. Once we got to a stable enough state with some content, meaning the priorities and goals that we're going to look at tonight, as well as the values and the mission, we then did focus groups. And I'll share with you the number of focus groups that we've conducted, who attended those focus groups, and then the feedback that was out from those focus groups. My hope is that you can use that feedback this evening to really dig into the values and the mission to understand what changes of things you'd like to make. And so that'll be the discussion this evening. There will also be another meeting. So we had one meeting last night as a steering committee, and got some feedback also on values and mission based on the focus group feedback that we received. We looked at that focus group feedback as a steering committee. We analyzed and synthesized that feedback, added to the feedback for you all to see this evening as well. We will meet again in May, and that's all leading up to some board meetings that you all have that help you sort of make some formal decisions about the strategic plan, with the goal of adopting the plan by June 16th. And that gave us that so that we can have time to prepare for the summer, to align school plans. Each school has a unique set of needs that we want to align to the broader organizational plan, and so that allows us the time to do that for the next school year starts. So that's the rationale of it, of the timeline, and a little bit of the process that's been used. Our norms for this evening, because we have, it is a work session, we want to roll up our sleeves and really get to work, but we have a fairly aggressive agenda too. So we want to stay focused, really stay focused on the values and the mission. The importance of that is, again, the timing. If there are any changes to those values or that mission statement, then we need to allow time for any policy procedures that have to happen. And so we don't want to derail the ultimate adoption of the plan in June, based on the rationale that we share. So we want to stay really focused on values and mission this evening. We wanted to do some collaboration and consensus building, and that'll be essential, because again, this is a work session, and while we're sharing ideas, hearing other opinions, but ultimately collaborating and reaching some hopefully consensus that we can share with. We understand there's two board members down here, so we'll share that with them as well, give them an opportunity to dig in. Last one is don't let perfect be the enemy of good. So there will always be, in every strategic planning process, ideas that we bounce off of each other, that sometimes we may not agree on every single word, but if this evening we can agree directionally, that we're moving in the right direction on our values, we're moving in the right direction on our mission, and generally, we're moving in the right direction on our priorities, that'll help us continue to move the process forward and reach that headline that we need to see. So those are our norms. Are they? With regard to the missing board members, how would you solicit their input or provide any other need to? Sure. There's some kind of running line here that we're going to pitch out to you later.
So they've already received the documents that you've received, that was the mission and the values. They would also have the ability, when those two are policies, those policies have to be read twice before the board, so they would also have that chance then for the deployment.
What's the policies?
The mission and the values.
So with that, just want to share some brief overview of the focus groups. So we conducted thirty focus groups, and you can see the number of, the types of stakeholders that gave input. It was an open process that was available to multiple stakeholders throughout the district. You can see we've got parents, students, staff, community members, elected official business leaders, Harper College staff. So quite a wide variety of folks that gave input in these focus groups. Each focus group was forty-five minutes and followed the same structure. So there's a quick welcome and introduction. We did a review of the strategic planning process, most of that we have to do with us now, on the timeline. We asked for feedback on the mission and core values, knowing that that's important and clear from the community on those, and so we asked during those thirty focus groups for feedback. We also asked for feedback on the priorities, goals, and indicators, solicited that feedback, and then we did a closing thanks. Took that information and synthesized it. There was a note taker in each of these meetings that was anonymously taking notes. We took those notes and looked for trends. Based on those trends, we identified some feedback on your current mission and value statement, which you have in your folders. So wanted to just briefly share what we saw in terms of what was compelling about the values and the mission statement in general as trends across those thirty focus groups. They generally liked that there was student representation, so whether that be picture or student focus in the mission and the values. They liked that it was well organized and generally the look, there was some input around how we can improve that. I'll share that with that, I'll share that with you in just a moment. They liked the statement, "Our district values." It signals symbolically what you value, what you feel is important, what, how you will act, given that. This concept of service was something that focus groups elevated as an important concept that they also felt was good in the mission, or in the values in the mission. Highlighting post-secondary preparation, so certainly focusing on what's happening in schools and in grade levels, but also preparing ultimately for success in a post-secondary way. The inclusion of wellness and compassion. So not just an academic focus, but also a focus on the whole child, specifically relationships, compassion, and this concept of overall wellness as well. And then the district motto. Folks have found that compelling over and over again, and so we'll talk a little bit about how that may impact your values and your mission. Some consideration for improvement on the values specifically. Generally, across the groups, they thought that there were too many values. So as we think about, and what we heard over and over again, is it's hard to keep that number in our minds in front and center if values are designed to drive actions. And so there seems to be this sort of consensus that there were just too many. Folks were asking, could we either delete or combine some? So those are some of the conversations that we'll have tonight and will be thinking through. The value description seemed fairly wordy and almost like a business plan, so what we heard from focus group members is could we simplify the language so that for anyone who was looking at these, they could really easily understand them? There are some feedback on how these are displayed, rather than displaying in lists. Could we make it a little bit more friendly and think about how we display it in columns or boxes or other ways? Certainly some of the color feedback, and this will be handled in graphic design as we get through and stabilize the content. The concept of equity, inclusion, and diversity came up as something that folks said that they left perhaps with longer emphasis around. There was this concept of don't list academic rigor first, and I don't want to confuse you that folks were devaluing academic rigor, but they also wanted to see the other elements more front and center somehow, so maybe balance a little bit, something that we'll have to drop off with. And then communication should highlight multiple considerations. So maybe in the values, some way to, so in the mission, some way to signal that, so that that can be a guideline in some of your priorities as well. So I want to share a couple of sample values from other districts, just to give you some examples of values and how they're presented in other places, both in school districts, but also outside of education, outside of our sector. As I share these with you, my request to you will be to take a few notes on what you find compelling. What do you find compelling either about the design and/or the content of these values? Because what you find compelling could help us and be generative in some ideas when we break out into small groups and start thinking about any revisions to your values. This one is from Kent Public Schools in Washington. Couple of things to notice, you'll see on the bottom, they have three simple core values. You can see that the values are one word in terms of a statement, but then there's a brief explanation of what they mean by that. So equity, for example, could be interpreted in multiple ways. They wanted to be quite clear about in Kent, what they mean by that. What they mean is that student equity means that all students have equal access to quality staff, courses, activities, et cetera. So you can see, and I won't read each of those to you, but you can see the construct there. At the top, the only thing, other thing I want to point out is that they signal that their core values drive a culture in the district. And they're designed to answer this question, how do we want to act consistent with our mission, et cetera. I think that's an important construct to keep in mind as we think about any modifications to core values, if that's something that's important to you as a board and an organization. DC Public Schools, again, just another example. You'll see that they have six, not just one word, but a couple of words that are signal kind of what the core, what their values are very clearly, and a brief statement that sits under each of those. I won't read those to you, but if you'd like me to come back to these for reference, happy to do that. I want to share a couple of others outside of education. So this first one, with our partners, our coffee and our customers at our core, we live these values. And you can see what those are in the bullet points here. Culture of warmth and belonging, acting with courage, challenging the status quo, being present, connecting with transparency, dignity, and respect, and delivering our best in all that we can. Any guesses on who that may be, what company that may be? Starbucks. Starbucks. The next one, exceptional client service, operational excellence, a commitment to integrity, fairness, and responsibility, a great team, changing culture. Any guesses on this one? Who'd guess?
Amazon.
Amazon?
Walmart.
Walmart. This is JP Morgan Chase from the financial industry. Two fairly successful organizations that have quite simple value statements. If those value statements though drive actions, we can start to see how these may drive kind of even your experience with those organizations in those stores and those Starbucks. One other that I wanted to share, if you'll briefly read this to yourselves, I won't read it to you. Have you read it? Any guesses on who this may be? Google. It is Google. Yes. So I shared these just to give you some examples, to share some ideas, possible ideas. Tonight, we again want to be generative and look back at your core values. Based on the feedback that we got from those thirty focus groups and the steering committee that represents a cross-section of your stakeholders in this district, as they shared that there were perhaps too many, the wording was a little bit confusing, is there an opportunity to refine your core values based on that feedback, based on what you all are moving forward as an organization, what you've done as board members? So perhaps those can give you some ideas and be generative. I don't make any assumptions about what you'd do with those values. You may decide to keep them. But I did want to open up the conversation and share some examples from other groups to give, give you some ideas. Also, just quickly, a reminder that each of those values statements that I chose were samples intentionally chosen because I think we can relate to those. We've had some experience with Google, with JP Morgan Chase, with Starbucks, that aligns to, I would venture to say, what they value. In other words, their actions are in fact driving their behaviors, they're driving the experience that we have with them as consumers. And so I think that's an important litmus for a good set of values as well. So given that, we're going to spend some time looking at your values and deciding if we need to make any changes. We're going to do this in small groups. I think the easiest is to just divide. So Mr. Rosenblum and Dubrowski, if you'll come back to this table, we have a couple of staff members that'll join you as well, just to continue and help facilitate the conversation. And then read here, if you'll join this second table over here. Just before you go, here's what we're going to do. You'll need your.
I would suggest, because Mrs. Pumpwitz.
I would suggest, because Mrs. Trump, Watson, myself, or the steering committee, I would suggest that we not be part of the same group. So maybe-
I'll leave that up to you all.
Why? Why?
Because we have been privy to a lot of information that this group has not been privy to in the process. You don't, you don't agree with that?
I don't see that it would make a difference.
I think it will.
I don't have a problem being with this group, and that's, that's fine. I just don't see how that would affect it. Sure. Well, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that.
Would you go back to-
Sure.
I was not here last night for the steering committee meeting. What, what did they do last night?
Yeah, we'll share that in just a minute. We looked at the feedback from the priorities and goals and then asked specifically, what changes or do they have additional feedback to those priorities and goals based on the feedback from focus groups?
Okay.
So we analyzed the focus group feedback.
When will we get that information?
I'll share that with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So, but just before you move, one thing that, you'll need your red folders, you'll obviously need the values that are in those. I'll leave these directions up. I'd like you to just spend a minute individually though first, looking at your core values and labeling them. So you're going to label them with a check mark, a slash, or a plus mark. Check mark is absolutely, we should keep this one. Perhaps we need to delete one, that could be the slash. And then do we want to combine any? That would be a plus. If you want to combine some, maybe circle the two that you want to combine, so that you can indicate those and identify those. You're going to do that individually first, so I'm going to give you a minute. You could do that here, if you'd like, before we move. And then we're going to move into those small groups and we're going to create a clean list based on your individual thoughts of how we should modify these values, if at all. So that'll be the discussion in small groups. So the next part of the conversation is a continuation of the thinking that you were just doing, which certainly is an opportunity to extend your thinking and refine your thinking. That was just your initial, initial flow of group, the initial attempt, thinking for yourself about how you have been hurt by some of these. The next thing to do is in small groups, have a discussion. You may be comparing notes, what each of you believe we should keep, we should perhaps delete, we should combine. The outcome of that conversation should be one clean list, and I'll give you a piece of chart paper to chart your clean list. Each group will have one clean list of a revised set of core values. The wording doesn't have to be perfect, we can refine that. So I don't want you to get stuck on a word like "the," "a," "and." The concepts are important. And so we want to focus on conceptually, do we think we have the right values? We can add a value to the right course. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, please do. I'm happy to go back and share any of these samples, just, I'll be walking around, write me and say, hey, from the list that I was taking on what I found compelling, could you go back to Starbucks or could you go back to Kent Washington? I'm happy to go back to those. So feel free if you want to get some other ideas from some of those samples, I'm happy to do that. Once you have that clean list, we'll, I'll do a time check in about fifteen or so minutes. May take a little more time, I'm super flexible, we'll, we won't spend more than ninety minutes together. So you will feel me pushing sometimes, because we want to get to mission and I want to get to that conversation about duration as well. And so my apologies if you feel me pushing a little aggressively sometimes, but I want to get to those other components of the meeting as well. So with that, let's move into small groups, and then I'll give you what we're going to do after each group has an opportunity to do their small group clean list.
How do we resolve differences between small group?
This is where the consensus and the collaboration comes in. And so if there are differences, obviously conversations about your experiences, about your data, about what you feel is important. If you simply can't come to a resolution, then perhaps you would leave two on the list if you're not agreeing on should we eliminate one, and that's one option, to leave two on the list. Another option could be to say, maybe we create a new core value that's a best of two that we disagree on. So there are a few options there initially.
Because then the five of us will come back together here and-
Five of you will come back together, you'll each share your lists. Ultimately, I'm going to ask you to place a vote on the final set of values as a group of five that you want to elevate and move forward. Questions about the process?
What, what happens with that vote?
It's simply, it is not a formal vote, it is simply an informal way to build consensus as this group. I would assume that we need to take that final list that you voted on, share it with the other board members that are not here, so that they can weigh in on it. And then ultimately, if they have additions or changes from that, have an opportunity in those policy procedures to-
Without, without the two board members being here, two members could change the outcome, so we're, we're going to be kind of an impasse, and we really can't talk to them directly, so.
They could.
Kind of what I'm saying is what we're going to say really, really may be nullified because of two missing words.
Not necessarily. I think, you know, if there's some input here, I think that that's really good. We'll share that with the two board members, they've, they've had this information.
How would you share that with the two board members?
I can share the final list with the board members.
Yeah.
Return it back to everyone.
And, and they have been asked, you know, if they have input into, into these. But we still have the opportunity to have another meeting this month also, if we give it to them. So why don't we give this an opportunity of see what we come up with and we may-
This might go aside, but that was just an observation and a caution.
And that's my point taken, and I'm just trying to make a statement that, let's see what plays out and how this goes, so we can move forward.
Couple of staff members will join you at, just to answer questions, I'll move the conversation, I'll be walking around, Dr. Small will be walking around, so happy to, again, move to any of those example slides if that's helpful.
Hello there.
You told she had this stuff.
Yes, I was going to say.
Yes, it is.
You have a lot of everything.
Sure.
I'm excited.
I'm excited to hear my thoughts today.
Have they, have they changed?
I think they're, and then a little more respect.
I mean, we had an underdign-
That's what my question is, that's what we're having a discussion about tonight. We like to keep this, we're not finding this better to go with.
I'm sure that one is strong.
Sorry, this is, as I think, you respect.
I heard, but it could be not just as far as-
I'm checking my success to see which one.
Yes, for clarification, so compassion dignity respect, we like to keep as a value.
Absolutely.
I think the respect of the essence, I like everything, so I initially stated, I didn't see, I know safety, but I'm not sure.
I think it's just basically because of our human interactions.
For example, in my opinion, academic rigor really-
With respect to the values, like me-
Combined, it's a little bit insane, so probably not.
And then some better proof.
So they had a, would you, the tone should be stronger as far as what our traditions and our values are.
I think we want to each other, not because of three comments, I mean, three, I think those who hindered them to their, their-
Here's Matt.
So there's no, there's no, there's, each one is presented as a standalone, as a reality.
You said safety above this, I could-
Everyone's a kind of-
We have to work out.
There's everything there, there's environmental environment, and then the-
I was talking about, how do you push it along?
So I think there's a kind of, because I was trying to, three, so it's in my-
Yeah, I, that's, that's a more-
And it's take care of ourselves, so taking care of the whole, and then to take care of each other, sort of in my head, it's a position where anything, it's a super ego that, and culture always having your real balance, and I think, but our values and our culture, like it's a, we want to have that respect in ourselves, in our environment. And we'll be content with the way these values are structured, safety is one of those.
Eventually, I'll ask you, once you have a couple of votes, put this on these chart numbers, not necessarily, we should, you know, just safety, but just in our, same point, that's it.
The board, it's nice, I sort of, nice, I might, and the measure of respect, so a little bit of change.
Right?
And that's a lot of potential to be around.
I think we are, I heard it now, someone, if somebody's-
As a starting point, as a bullet point, and then-
Well, I'm back to, you know, I'm about that.
Respect to the community.
Respect to the community.
Right, well, we, we have that strength of diversity, so it's, it's there, society is in that, but-
So, so you agree with the respect of compassion dignity?
Well, I don't know if we, you know, we would.
Okay, which was you?
Do you think that when we value compassion, really actually, compassion?
Really?
I mean, I think that, would you do that? I mean, of each other, I respect somebody, you know, that's a passion, it's a, this one, it doesn't have any, I think, I would, I think we respect this whole arch, I think we're in a win streak. I like the, I like the, you know, the way that came to mind, and this is, I think, you do, you just talk, so, so, you know, you, 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 you know, I mean, they may be, and, and acknowledging another person's place, so respect is the action, and the agent. So, and I see them as little ones for love, I also see it as a good role, as a person to have, with, with, so, I'm flexible.
Can we look back to that one, or just some-
Yeah, I don't really think it's compassion, just, I will make that, this, for me, it's a, okay.
Let's, I mean, what is respectful dignity and maybe to that, what about-
Do you still, do you agree with us on safety and dignity?
Yes, yes, I agree with this.
So then leave it just, maybe with safety and dignity in the description, under it, you know, so, I have those, I was, it's, it's, it's something that we're seeing here, is your values and strengths, or how, and, and, my question was safety and dignity.
So using the words, dignity and safety and roles, safety and roles would be-
Some, but I can have some district, including safety and roles.
Okay, so you don't want, you don't feel comfortable having safety and roles as a value for yourself?
For, for safe, what we, you, I think, would pass, maybe, I mean, what we're seeing potentially is, a lot of fire, because the way safety is, just, I think, it's part of the mission, it's a part of you yourself.
For that, if they, if they're, we're, we're-
There's the respect for, okay, what do you think? So, what were you saying, with the population, like, how is it respectful? Like, it could be a shame, and, 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 because that's what it talks about here, I think that that's important, if you're getting some values.
What about safety, having the respect of dignity, and your safety and roles, its own items with-
Again, when I, maybe, safety, this, this, so you, you would split it forward in two kinds of times. So we're wired to, we, we see safety as a value, and they suggest, have to, this ever, but that, that, that description means you're safe to yourself. So that's where you have the type of, generally, we'll, we'll, meanwhile, to leave a final area, and then we think that's, well, there's, sure, that's-
What about, so, under the goals, still having the roles, or, yeah, three, the respect, dignity, and-
Yeah, anyway, but they're both- It should be, not, 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 not,
One, two, let's, it's, I'm here with...
So, what do you think, what's, what would be your...
Perfection, sorry.
Okay, alright.
So make sure about communication.
Yeah, because I can perceive communication as propaganda as well. So it's like not that I'm going to be around being.
Yes. Okay. One reason was that you were, you had some, as you said, you worked together.
I guess I was the first one.
Ah, yeah.
Uh, taking these.
Thank you very much. These are easy values. Well, communication, I think, was still kind of related to change. I have a question.
I think we strive for a better development. We do things in order to, I assume, our own research. I'm interested in administration. You're building my career.
Yeah. Or acts versus action.
I think it's, I think we value communication. We are, we have a lot of these things.
But then, for, you know, financial integrity and efficiency, if you want.
Because I think we, we have innovation that, I think we have innovation or like, there's a second. I mean, so, yes. I can personally, I don't see it as secondary.
Okay, that's when you definitely, right, so innovation is, is, is.
We want to.
Key.
Okay.
Do you want to?
I realize, you know, how critical like.
Yeah, I mean.
You just believe in, you know, here's the thing, if you put all that ability in, in, on, on certain, like, there's a personal. Which is, um, some variations in the perspective. And not for the part of standards, right?
Well, I know.
And everything that's been, it's hard to just play.
Am I, I should definitely.
No, if you want to. Yeah, if you want to take innovation and opportunity, and if you see it as well.
I wish that would be the opportunity. It's a conscious innovation in itself. That works.
Alright, welcome back. We did a quick share out. We've got two lists. The goal of this share out is to do two things. One, obviously, I didn't find some words in your business between these two lists. If there's any differences, it's going to be all those through the conversation. We want to be able to take back these lists and be able to support them, the headers, without them kind of start to find us. Um, so just to, if you could share real briefly, the, you came to five, maybe six, depending on how you sort of build up. If you'd share the, maybe the headline.
So, um, early on, we decided that most of those core, uh, actually, all the core values are equally insured. And so what we decided that we wanted to do was condense them and find some transparency with some of the core values that we had. And so I will read to you already, but this is the list we came up with. The one thing I will talk a little bit about is the number five. Uh, we want to actually flip it and have the diversity of the region be the headline of that number five. And that potentially be a number six. Passion, good, respect, separate line, I have, we're still kind of putting them around.
Well, that would be.
Definition.
Yeah, that would be the definition. And that's, that's, that's the first one. The other thing is the, the verbage, the data card verbage, we send down bullet points at each one. You know, they can be happy to let it. And the other one, Mr. Perry, you know, instead of listing them, verb, to, to add the circle, to show the, the data, they're all connected. We have to go around, the each one would have a arrow pointing to an envelope, or actually, a two-way.
And one is not more important.
One is.
So you don't elevate one.
They all have to work on again.
Okay. Um, I think I heard, seeing your conversation, I just want to clarify to make sure that this is right. You may also think about separating these two. Academic, growth and rigor as one, and then a separate one, opportunity and innovation. Is that a fair characterization? So if we keep this as one, flip it, then we would have one, two, three, four, five, six in total. Team two, or B, or the other team. The A team, the A team. I know, right?
So we're talking, yeah, we're talking about, um, you know, why we're here, thanks, that, that, we need, so you kind of, so I kind of agree with your, um, education of learning and opportunity for that. It's all, kind of, all hundred of pursuit of knowledge, so please, so, 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 it's our kind of, different values. Financial integrity and efficiency kind of sides are the value. Safety, wellness, compassion, dignity, respect, kind of sides are the value. And then accountability and innovation are kind of almost independent of, of those two, the, 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 um, they had a robust discussion about communication and accountability. But, yeah, so, I'll take this.
So as I listened to how you were bringing the values together after the check mark next to those, that seemed pretty similar conceptual. You've got efficiency, financial integrity, safety and wellness. Would you all agree that those for sure are similar in terms of conceptually, how you thought of them and how you heard this group describe?
I would just be the first one in there.
Yeah. I would agree with that. The question that I have for you on that is, you labeled that as pursuit of knowledge. Similar construct, or conceptually, the items are similar. You just gave it a different title, so I wanted to open up with a quick discussion among this group, how you all feel about that.
Is, is, is Hack Day Lab, the, like, what I think that, that we introduced a new definition? For what? Is this in the past?
Yeah. One alternative, what if that were the title, and I'm not advocating for this, just introducing alternatives. Pursuit of knowledge is the title, but the words under that were the same in terms of what you were describing exactly.
Which, which are the three in a row?
I think that's, that's kind of what the, the suggestion was, that it's, what's, what's, have the word opportunity.
Innovation, I think.
Yeah, alright. We had discussion in regards to innovation, maybe that that should be its own separate, um, value. Because when you continue to look for advancement opportunities, things of that nature, so we were looking at that as doing its own along with accountability, keeping those two separate.
And then, although in the end, everything here is driving academic, right?
Innovation.
But innovation could be technical, it could be something, it could also be curriculum, and, and, uh, teacher, educational information, all that.
Sounds like this group was flirting with that as well, making innovation separate from academic rigor or pursuit of knowledge, how do you feel about having this separate role of innovation?
We flirted around with that. I think my only reserve is the fact that we would have education and multiple definitions along with this. And innovation and, it is, all of them, of both education.
So innovation, from your perspective, cuts across a lot.
I see the innovation, we're in, of, of education, community, you indicators, look for new ways to impart new and, and new information especially, and old information continued.
Well, I would give the one-to-one I can transition. I don't think, I don't think two, two is on board, to change the, I have a, like, a couple of new tools. Pushed up for, I think, about having our students, um, and how they interact with their classes. I mean, even using the I can, I honestly report something with the guy to, you know, say, for, you know, uh, like, get in a situation, you know, really. And you have an I can that allows you to reach out to your counselor rather than, obviously, and then it works in the event. I don't think that's necessarily in academic innovation, but it's something where we're responding to student needs and pushing. Well, that's quite down the road.
Two, two or four, I think, just, uh, just to, to show the gap. That's innovation, but it's not academic.
That would be comfortable using innovation as a separate line item, but not using education.
Okay. How do you all feel about that?
I think it's.
So that, that comes with, I don't, I don't, certainly, I think it was knowledge.
Yeah, so we've got innovation as one. We've got efficiency, financial integrity, and I'm just working off of this list, I'm not ignoring that one, I'm just standing here. Uh, safety and wellness, so we've got one, two, three. We've got this fourth one around pursuit of knowledge, that it sounds like you are comfortable with, that title as long as it includes this concept of academic rigor.
Okay. Can I make on that, please? So, yes. Knowledge has a certain connotation to academic educator, um, another kind of connotation potentially to academic educator. And so many of our courses are not simply knowledge things, as far as just learning content, or your skill base, or your skills.
Hey, kind of, do you want to change, describe the difference between why I, kind of, you know, and, and this?
Sure, you're not just learning words or handling, or learning skills in some of our courses, in lots of our courses as well, so I hate to not just simply focus on one and not, if, just wanted to throw that out.
Whatever they have a skill, I think, you can see that.
What is, what would you, would you consider, um, would you recommend keeping it as academic rigor, or is there another, um, statement that would use to describe the kind of cross?
We did academic growth and rigor is, academic growth is a one, these, rigor is, which I think is good, but I think also there's things that we can focus on, and the education system is focusing on this, which is a growth.
You want to try bar, do you want me to?
So that, such that.
In, 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 I think that's what you pull away from the words and describe the concept of what you want, and we can figure out the words, but what is the core value of the concept that you're aiming for?
Yeah, three words, one, two, three. It's, it's all, or all, what we want to do.
What you want from that is the word, what's important, what message are you sending? That's the, that's the question.
What would be at the head of your, your academic rigor and rigor?
I think what you're trying to find is like, the core reason that students come to school is to learn, right? And one other thing, the way you see that is also academic, which may grow, meaning you are, well, we just quantify it. So we could use, like, that just was like, we can use any of those words, I just wanted to open the conversation about the specific word focusing on knowledge, as opposed to a broader, um, broader sense of the activities and the classes.
There is a connotation too, that I see in districts here, but another district that I've worked in, that pursuit of knowledge, that word knowledge is about the teacher imparting knowledge. And it takes away the ownership of the student, which I only, uh, pronounce.
Is that, is that, 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 for, 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 right?
It's critical thinking, problem solving, critical learning standards. The standard part I'm not sure about, um, but for sure, critical thinking, critical learning.
Academic rigor for rigor?
I just took it out of the, kind of, simple old education learning. It says our district values continues pursuit of knowledge, so, I'm not pulling this out of the air.
But when I think academic, I don't think it's special, unfortunately, look. And, and here's the thing, I mean, again, our values should be something that's universal, or even the community will count for that. So, Mr. Perry, we're going to have, uh, critical learning, dignity, confidence, and, and, uh, pursuit of knowledge, which is, especially it's around centuries, as far as, so, I just thought it was a universal reason. Obviously, if you've got, you need an education, that word triggered you, and then you say, it's okay.
Certainly, you're my green, but I did want to bring it up, as in, for the conversations, I mean, you're not, but I, I mean, I'm just, I mean, I'm on either side of it.
I'm going to go back to the learning.
Yes.
Because it's made different things, I mean, there's, there's academic learning, there's skills learning, there's learning a lesson. It's probably an experience factor, and there's, um, and there's software, to be better at.
Be aware of. Um, the, uh, the words are actually in gold too, as it says, made for proficiency level, or just for two long courses, course, critical learning standards. So the word critical learning standard is already, in, 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 in the gold. And that, and that's what I'm saying, the, the, if critical thinking, critical something, ability to think by yourself.
Would you all be comfortable if we came back to you with a few options on this particular one, that had a description in the meat of it, and I think that's a good conversation, does that feel like a big place for tonight? And then let's talk a little bit about accountability, communication, and transparency. You all had accountability over here as a key group. You would love innovation with that, we've got innovation over here, we've discussed that already.
No, it was a separate.
Oh, separate, thank you, that's great, thank you, okay. But accountability, you all have, and we've got those three, accountability, communication, and transparency. How does this group feel about those concepts together?
I like transparency being there.
Okay.
And then how. Communication and accountability, right, I see us here.
We had, we had a discussion on that.
Talk to us about that.
I saw that as a, a, from the definitions that we had here.
Yes.
Um, you were starting to exchange of information, and the question was, is, is there exchange of information, or is there a delivery of information? Right? Is it one-way versus two-way, and those kinds of things.
I would agree with that. In order to have, if it is, it is an output, and it is helpful under something, in order to have accountability, it has to be clear, precise communication, and what the standards are, and who's accountable, whether, and then the accountability from the facts, as a capability or, like, based, based on, if there's no transparency, there's no transparency, and you can't be accountable for suffering, you know, the others.
How do you all feel about, um, similar solution here, if we give you two options, one that has communication embedded in the header, one that doesn't?
Yeah, I think accountability and transparency go together really well. And I think the communication, I think, if I understand this correctly, you're looking at communication that we provide to our shareholders, and students, staff, community members, and what communication from staff not. But this really doesn't cover that.
I think what I'm hearing both of you say, but please correct me if I'm misstating what I'm hearing. Both groups value communication somehow, too. The question is, is it embedded with accountability and transparency, or is that?
That you have a communication, a gift, a tool, process.
Is that the value, so is that another way to ask that question, is communication of value, or is it in how you do business?
I guess firstly, I think it's a vanity, because we have to be communicating and, and talking to us. Teachers need to be talking to their principal, and their chair people, and so that communication needs to be out there as to what's going on, what's needed, um, all of those conversations. So it's not always when you're top now, it's got to be communicating without a wall, so.
And I see accountability, you know, you've got a state record card, right?
Yes.
You know, but if you have a lockdown, you need to get that information. So there's a difference in communication, when you have, you know, hey, there's a, there's a shooter, or, or, say, something that needs to be, a response, you need to get that information, but, you know, higher value for that, and then accountability comes in the difference. So you do not be communicating that, hey, our ACT score has dropped two points since, since two years, but you're still accountable for those results. So I think there is a, there is a difference in, in two pieces of all this. At least that's the way I perceive it.
I agree with you. So I have, I like accountability, and then I look up, and then using communication, and then it has transmission, I don't like that definition. So maybe you need to, you need to, maybe, maybe, trans, maybe, and, and.
Communicated, they call it info, and, I think, besides two-way, I think there's, and, and.
So if we'll come back to you with two options around this one, if that's okay for tonight, so we can move on that. Last, um, compassion, dignity, respect, with D E I being the header, I think you all had some verb, did you have? Yes, compassion, dignity, and respect, there. Does this group feel okay if we come back to you with a core value that has D E I, but compassion, dignity, and respect, that's the definition under it, or part of the definition under it?
We had a considerable discussion in your remarks today.
Yes.
And, um, maybe also from our speakers, we see here, our audience, that respect is important. Um, maybe keeping that word in there somewhere along the way, um, respect with everyone, the students, the, uh, the staff, community members, everything. So respect has to be in the, in the.
Does it have to be in the, uh, does it have to be in the title for you, or could it be in the definition under it, just as a clarification?
I'm uncertain, I think we thought that it should be.
If you're on the, if you're on the outside, and, and you've got no idea, just open up, the value statement to, uh, make the word respect is universal.
I think, I think, yeah, it is, it is. Please, how come, of the version technically?
I would say we, we eliminate compassion, because really, yeah, okay, I'm surprised you're stung, but, what? I mean, how do you, what does that mean? Compassion is something different, almost, each and every time, is it, is it a gentle hand on the shoulder, is it, is it a note when somebody uses a large one? Is it empathy? I, I mean, it's, it's got a lot of connotations that doesn't really drill down and convey one universal understanding. In my.
Do you provide the definition of compassion? I, I, I think a simple plan, definitely, because compassion is, what is it, solid?
That would be the word.
That's part of compassion.
Part of, perhaps, but if you look at diversity, equity, inclusion, does compassion come to your mind? Or does, I would say sympathy is a, uh, compassion. But I don't necessarily think those are, are.
It sounds like we're, this as one, and maybe this as a separate one, just to come back to you as a word to, um, evaluate.
Yeah, I think if you, if you have diversity, equity, and, 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 you're going to provide, you're providing this thing. I don't think you're always going to put that compassion, but that's a, I mean, well.
In inclusion, I think you do. If you, if you, truly believe in inclusion, and it's your compassion, so, who would not feel, so, compassion.
Sort of outlier, if you're moving, it is.
Yeah, how do you measure that? So that, that was kind of our, our point, and I think, you know, respect is really important, and I think that needs to be one of those first words up there.
Because I think, I think, I think you can respect somebody if you're excluded from a group, let's say you get caught on the soccer, and you should still respect your coaches and other players who excluded you. Equity, let's say you didn't get the same portion at lunch that the person next to you, you, you still respect the lunch, you, you push your dish to screen, and that's, and then diversity, if you're in a whole, you need some balance, but say, you're surrounded by everywhere, it's a few, and you're shoulder stuck, you're just one person behind, and you can still shoulder stick. So I think, I think that's universal to, to everybody, associated with those thoughts.
So this feels like it is the one that we need to wrestle with and see if it elevates to its own value. Would you all agree to that?
Or I'd say we need to wrestle with it, we do.
Okay.
Not that, well, you know.
Well, we'll come back to you with two options. You've certainly gone from eleven to eight or six or seven, depending on how we slice this. So you were addressing the feedback, which was, there are too many, I've heard, and we've heard several of kind of the thoughts that you all had with these. So what we'll do is take these, try to put them in some very simple language, under these headers, for you to multiply it.
And it sounds like the two-way versus combining, still allows us to have, um, like, uh, how would you say?
One of the things that we're just going to have to balance is even in combining, we don't want one core value that is eight concepts. In, in a core value, right? So that's something that we'll have to wrestle with.
So I have a question, regarding, um, just values and goals and people like that, I've seen a lot of organizations and people, there's, uh, a diagram, a, a, a whole way of showing, like, people's values, right? Where it has all these words all over a piece of paper, and some of the words are bigger, some of the words are in the middle, they're right kind of thing. Um, has there been any thought about, I mean, what would be effective, to incorporate that into something like this?
We haven't talked explicitly about that in the design. Um, I've seen, like, word, like, word mats or word bubbles in some of these as well. Um, the circle idea came up here, um, so we can wrestle with design, but we want to be sure we get the right concepts, the right content. Okay.
Keep it simple.
Yeah.
Can you talk just a little bit more about what, some of the feedback that you've gotten from the different focus groups, and how they felt a little bit more about the values in there?
Yeah, I mean.
Highlight a little bit more.
Yeah, so I think what we saw in the feedback, I'll put it back up here. Overall, what we've heard over and over again is that, both in the presentation of the values, and the amount of information that's communicated, it was hard for people to keep those. And for them to really understand what it is that the organization kind of values, unless they are sort of reading them. We even had one instance, for example, where someone had it as their screensaver, and they still said to us, we don't know what the core values are, of the district are.
Oh, it was all.
So perhaps, so it could be in a, a few different, there are reasons why that may manifest itself, right? It could be that there's a, an importance of sort of coming back and connecting to the core values in all that we do in different ways. But it quite frankly, could be just in the amount of information that, what I will say is that, as I shared those sample core values, we saw, we see fewer core values being more powerful across organizations that tend to, that exist. And so, perhaps, yes, for sure, five is like twenty-five.
And then the other, um, sort of thing we've heard over and over, is just those words felt different, so as they read, our, our focus group read, it was, it was, there's not a lot of, it felt too dark, and too, sort of, uh, uh, stale, almost, too, um, prescriptive, not a lot of, sort of, meaning.
Alright, I want to move us on to mission. All right, I want to move us on to mission. What folks found compelling about your mission, and I'll read these because you're not up close. Staff does much more than serve the educational needs of the community. Your mission focuses on the concept of serving the educational needs of the community. They'd like to see that your mission is more unique to District Two-Eleven. We're going to focus on that. What is unique about District Two-Eleven that's different than perhaps a neighboring district, than another district across county lines or even a different state? What makes you believe? The definition of mission is who you are, who you serve, and what you do. So to think about those three things, what makes you unique from that perspective? Who you are, who you serve, and what you do. Wanted to showcase more students. This is mostly in the design, because there's just one picture of students there. Also in design, in fact, the student is holding the device, and so they're able to think about that a little bit, so that it wasn't clear that it was a tablet to everyone. The speech bubble wasn't easy, because it didn't run, but that is your mission. And finally, the photo of the staff represents the mission or the value, so they can try to understand a little more, more in quotes, so they're not just. Did you hear, can you say that you can tell it was like, you're powerful. So we have an intent here, but what we're currently doing is to see perhaps. So with that, my question for you is what makes Township High School? If you think about that, for the last few minutes, that was elevated, what makes, conceptually, what makes you unique? Your current mission is the one that's at the top, and you can see it on your papers as well, but Township High School District Two-Eleven serves the educational needs of the community, inspiring all students to successfully contribute to the world. In this period of community, what started to give me traction was your logo, or your motto, rather. So when you think in that motto, and it's put in some form, in this second version, Township High School District Two-Eleven provides extraordinary opportunities and innovative teaching that results in exceptional learning for all students and professional growth for all staff. I don't know that that's the right thing, but we were just trying to take what we're hearing from the students and incorporate it into our community. The final one is just there, what consideration did you wonder all these days, that you incorporate some other concepts into your mission? So back to the original question, what makes Township High School District Two-Eleven absolutely unique?
So what did she say?
I don't like to say. I think. Two fourteen A, what did she say? And the book. It's easy. It seems that compassion should be just soundness. It has something. And for them to get, I think they're better, it's a summary. And I think we do have a gate.
That means that Dan is.
And that is exactly the way it is. That exists. So I think we have a culture and then associate with this. And then if you want to do a particular profession, you can say, with your students, that that can be there some time. I wish I could change it all, if I could, so you could do that one, and that comedy video, you could do that. But I think this is, this is.
Well, I guess if we, the existing state of this time.
That's why I don't, that's one of the things that everyone has said, is something else in this, doesn't convey what needs to. Yes. So what do you?
You may need.
I think. I think the only thing that I really, maybe just see it as educational, I mean, inspire, was three words.
We have, we have.
Is that all of the missions, inspirations, that are two? There's more, they have a sense of self, that then, they're, they're.
So maybe you change the multiple states.
We have, we have.
So. Education. And that's a unique. Don't you want to have the twos?
We should.
The twos.
And I like the word service.
Everything is.
Service. I would say, I sort of wish it was service. But I also ask students, is that, they're all unnecessary, but sometimes it's a successful mission. So that same thing isn't necessarily education.
Necessary.
I think.
Necessary. Necessary something.
There's. Oh, that's.
The smart. The smart.
Now, my. If I look.
So it would be the necessary something to.
Successful.
To inspire us, to.
That's. Serves the community, like dividing off students.
Unnecessary.
Too successful.
Okay, welcome back. I just want to agree quickly, I'm going to capture some ideas that are reported to you in my elevator. We'll come back to you with a version for you to consider. So we'll start with this group, what were some ideas you wanted to add later? All right, what else?
We talked about our, our ability to lead the community.
All right. Anything else? All right. All right, this group.
Share.
Since you asked me something.
Please. Would you please share?
So I think I'm skewed because I was on the, in the development of this mission, and I think that some of what's, you know, taking away from the mission statement, this is brackets and things like that. Our whole philosophy behind this mission statement was that we wanted to produce qualities of individuals that come out of our schools, from our community, that can contribute to the world as a whole. So maybe this message could be made differently if it was a law or something. Some of the words that we could probably be tweaked is educational needs and inspiring. I'm not necessarily sure that it's our mission to inspire students, most of them have an idea of what they want to do, they're self-motivated, and we're helping them along the way. I'm not necessarily taking their inspiration as part of our, not part of our message. So I think, but we're in the, we were.
It's Township High School District Two-Eleven serves the community, providing all students the necessary blank, we got a blank there. Maybe you want to say tools, skills, maybe there's another one, to successfully contribute to the world.
We thought our thinking was the need for, because it was kind of more reactive. The other part is the resources, which they have.
All right, they discussed, you know, as far as imaging, as far as information, is maybe we have people that traverse that kind of, that are, you can show them different roles within the world, you know, where you, you know, somebody has a doctor, or students that can handle imaging, or, you know, some of those images that kind of allow our students to see themselves beyond the physical and material.
So I captured some of the images up here. I did, if I could grab your statement and take it, based on what you read, we'll come back to you with some ideas on how we hide focus into these big concepts as well.
We have, we have a mission.
Yep.
I think, I think we have.
All right, good work on those two big pieces, values and mission. Last thing we want to do tonight, is you'll open your folders and stake out that cell spreadsheet, the longer document. It's like this, it's at the front back. Just as a reminder on what's on here, so this is the work that has happened across a few different efforts. One, your academic goals are in blue on the front, those have been approved, we've been very clear with the steering committee, but these are not key. On the back are other priorities that have emerged through this process with the steering committee, that have been synthesized, invented by the steering committee. These are, there are a few tweets based on the focus group feedback that we've gotten that we'll bring back to you in future meetings, but in general, you can see the direction that we're moving. You'll see that the priority header is on the very left-hand column, then you'll see a goal for each priority in the next column, indicators. Some of the feedback that we got from focus groups was they liked the brevity of what they saw. They saw those columns, they saw the header, they saw the goals, and they saw the indicators. In those thirty focus groups, the theme was they could wrap the header, they liked that. One thing that you'll see then for you all as additional information this evening is this columnist, how do you know you're making progress? And you'll see some other measures there. I'm providing that for you for information tonight, in order to help us with this decision that you'll have to wrestle with, is this a three, four, or five-year plan? My thought was if you could take a minute to just briefly review this, I know you all have gotten this before the meeting, had an opportunity to look at it, but if you'll briefly review this one page in totality, as you're reviewing it, the question I want to keep in your mind is, in how long would it take us to complete all of this? Is it a three-year process, a four-year process, or a five-year process?
So I have a couple of questions, like, I feel like some of these goals are redundant.
Yeah.
Like, I look at goal seven, I look at goal three, and I'm not sure that they're, they were headed.
Yeah, here's what we heard from focus groups. They said five and nine, and six and eight felt competitive. Five and nine, if you'll look at those briefly. So goal five, students demonstrating growth in physical, mental, and social wellness, that's a wellness goal. Nine is wellness, is well. We wrestled with that in the steering committee last night, we think we've come to a possible solution that we can bring a recognition back to you. That was just last night, so we're not prepared to show that, but you read at this moment, what we're bringing back to you. Always want a goal, always look at that. You'll get that in the next time you meet. So then, yes.
So then on that one, like you said, three and seven, if you do, I know it's not a good for the steering committees today, that's what I'm committing right now. With regard to facilities and finances, I find that, you know, we're, you know we're making progress, but we're not doing it. We're just mainly, are bound supporting our policy, and we're staying that freedom. It sounds like you're making progress by not making progress. So I would concern with ten point one. And I guess, I don't know how, for ten-three, if there's no issues with any of our electronic access and information, we're making progress? So again, it's one of those things, like, if nothing's happening, we're moving forward, which doesn't seem.
Do you envision two, three, four, or four more?
Yes, six and eight for the other two. So five and nine, who's out, these were elevated by the focus group, ten steering committee, as being a bit repetitive, and six and three. So six is around equity. Eight, you'll see is excellent staff. There are some indicators there around overstaff, for example, that felt repetitive with six. Steering committee wrestled with that last night, will bring some recognition for how they reconcile that recognition. We got to some concrete recommendations last night, I'm sure. When you look at the totality of this, thinking about this, what would this, where's your heads in terms of three, four, five?
Of course, sort of things walk in the freshman congregation, the academy, and you wrote, will they approach and other board itself?
Yeah, right there.
Okay, and this, the attention here was three years?
No.
This is.
Five.
I think it's not the five years, but the thing that, you know, I would like to see that these are the law, I would like to see a benchmark of each year, your ones, this is a goal, your twos is a goal, your threes is a goal. And then, some, I don't know, I, if you don't hit the benchmark, what do you do? So if there could be, what do you do with it?
Other thoughts on duration?
There are some of these things that are just out of the, right? But these years, you'd be, every year, from now until, I'm here, I'm just saying, right? So you say, oh, in five years, you're going to do this, two years, I was doing this now, except it's a natural, right? You do this. So, but I would rather set five years, and if you know it's weird or boring, right? So there's a point, take me to identify this one, you should build different figures, or maybe even this year, or next year, maybe to set some goals, and then have three goals for milestones in years, to see how they're doing, and maybe with some year, we said, you know, this is our plan, but this. And maybe there's something that we said, you know, it's a private plan, but this should be done in three years. And three years, if it's not done, to just put it in the, in the outer.
And then to that one, like seven point four, we're already doing it. So I don't know, I mean, improvement should be taking what we're doing now and making progress from this point forward. It's not something that we're gonna implement that we haven't been doing. So automatically I look at this and, you know, what do we need knowledge, what do we need to improve the strategic plan? Because it was already done. Four types of measures.
The goal one through six, two of them are small, not fine.
So to give you some background on the work behind this, this is a base graph that keeps you. I have team members who are listening who have said, they are drafting next album. We don't see it yet because they're still drafting. But we need to get this in front of you, understand how many years we want to go with it. And then we put a trend and a level.
I think this is a little bit right, that it's a five-year plan, but within that five-year plan, it's possible to hit, okay, we can knock this one out.
And then one more thing on the goal nine, where we're talking about sense of belonging and trust and safety. Do you have a belonging measure for kind of my most students? So they're giving some metric there for the trust and safety. And we try to have all of our students identified, trusted, developed. Those that are in situations like that, they have some sort of measure. How we're improving, improving the safety and to a point of our value of respect and interactions.
That's part of the habit.
Also the priority.
Yeah. So those, those numbers.
But I agree with the target.
Well, we know what the numbers are and then it has to come up with whatever we want. Here's where we're at.
We can accept that others, we say we want you here, then they have to learn how to get there.
Turn up. Well, a four A and then say we can't make it.
So what I'm hearing is five-year plan? Any disagreement on that?
Can I add one more? For the excellent staff. If we look at, what was it? Eight point three, annually improved quality and spoken professional development based on emerging needs. Maybe kind of narrow that down a little bit and how we track the development and making sure that everybody has that opportunity of getting to develop.
Always time to pop the goal in form that is common, obviously. So much appreciated.
You will see the next column.
That will not be the next.
So we'll save it before we have.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Three final thoughts on tonight. We've got some reviews on our side, so we'll come back to you with a refined set of ideas based on your thinking, a revised mission based on your thinking. And your lean towards, it sounds like a five-year plan, a safety measure.
You said lean towards, I needed to finish it.
Great.
That derives from every.
Five years. Yeah, five, but some of it can be three.
Absolutely.
Don't stretch towards it.
Which this current plan, some of those things were executed a lot sooner than what we had anticipated. So, yeah, it's a failed point.
Any kind of thoughts?
Do we have some kind of natural disaster formula?
No. We weren't going through an act, we weren't going through an active disaster. You don't want to come to that.
So I understand that you want to make a better, more realistic disaster.
Now, we've all done twelve. Are we taking this with us or should we?
They are, but they are drafts for you and they will change each time you get, each one of these pieces of paper, except for obviously the, right, it will change each time.
No more workshop. Thank you all for your time this evening.
Right, so, right. If there are any other business to come before the board? If not, then our meeting will be adjourned at eight twenty-five. Eight twenty-five.